We're gonna get this meeting going. Normally, we start with, I'll call it one meeting order. I'd like to start with just a stand and moment aside for the salt panel. Then part of our student panel. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, we're going to tell you that this meeting has been properly posted in all the known posting places. And then we need a motion to approve the agenda as it is here.
A second?
Okay, with a motion and second, is there a discussion? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold at same time, the motion's carried. Okay, we're gonna turn over their student elective.
Hold it, we'll turn it over to you and your team.
Yeah, I'm gonna turn it over to Mary.
There we go. It's over to that team. It's my team.
Alright, so we are here tonight to talk about the new online elective opportunities that we are offering to, originally our seventh and eighth graders, but now it's really extended down into our sixth grade as well to some of the opportunities that we have. So I have six students here. I'm gonna talk to them a little bit about what the programs are that we're offering, and then I have a student representing kind of each of the different branches that we're offering, so you can hear about what the student experience is. So, we decided that 2019-2020 school year, that we wanted to be able to answer the question, how do we offer students elective opportunities now previously available or in areas without staff knowledge? And so we've raised this conundrum, that there are things our kids wanted to learn about, that we didn't necessarily have people on staff who were qualified or had the knowledge to teach them. And so we went about trying to figure out, how can we make those opportunities available to our students and not just limit them to the things that our teachers have content knowledge about? So, that was really my driving question when I went to the Google Innovator Academy last summer, is I was looking for how to, I extend my reach to the students, knowing that I'm only one person, but there's more things that I want to teach. So I went to the academy trying to figure out, how can I multiply myself and not draw upon our students or our teachers more, but be able to offer more opportunities to our students? So coming out of, coming out of the Google Innovator Academy last summer, I started developing what I called Accutry courses, which was a chance for students to try occupations in middle school through virtual internships. And so I've developed three of them so far. The first one I developed is with CJ and Associates. It's a virtual internship in interior design, so kids work through what interior design means, warm and cool color combinations, choosing fabrics and textiles, and finishes. And then their final project will be to custom design a space. So given a given space, what can they put in there to design it? We have five students this quarter who are taking that class. The next I came up with was with TryNorth Business. It's in commercial construction, looking at everything from how do you get involved with commercial instruction and project management. And the kids right now are working through putting together like a quote and a bid, so looking through huge files of information, trying to fill out the right numbers, and figure out who they would give a contract to based on how their bid. And then they will eventually get to going through a scope review, and then picking out finishes, and learning about the skilled trades working in commercial construction sites. So we have one girl right now taking that one. And then our last one is with Tim O'Brien Homes. It's a residential home building course. We have six students taking that right now. Right now, they're working from the sales office side, so they had to do practice in interviewing people and gathering information, and listening to voicemails and deciding what from those voicemails is useful information and what is just somebody complaining. They have started looking at different floor plans, and trying to find the floor plan that fit the person's needs, so listening to voicemails, seeing what the client needs, and then looking for the floor plan that will match the most needs. The assignments are set up so that we can't meet every needs, there's some choice in there about which needs are we gonna meet, and which ones are we not. And then the next phase is to get into the like skilled trade side. So they will work as a carpenter for a day, trying to frame part of the house, they will work as an electrician for part of the day, or a plumber for part of the house, plumber for plumbing for part of the house, to see how constructional residential home takes people from the sales side, people from the office side, but then people also on the chat site. So I have Mason here, he is currently taking one of these courses, and he's just been talking a little bit about his student experience in an Accutry class. Mason, take it away.
I'm taking Tim O'Brien Homes, and what we've done, at least today, we were remodeling a kitchen and getting cabinets, we were doing faucets, handles, trying to make the kitchen budget friendly, high-end, and an average price for a kitchen. And then last week, we were finding a nice home for a family, and we were finding ones that were in their price range. I would take it again though, because I think it's more fun that we get to do stuff online, and it's not just we have to read it out of a textbook and write it on hand. This compares to a class, because like we'll have to do math online, or do science online, and I kinda like more online stuff than a textbook, just because they give you more options to do.
Thanks, Mason. So, when we started developing these online courses, I had a conversation about if one of my class periods is going to be taken up supervising students doing online opportunities, why not fill the room with as many different opportunities as we can? So instead of just offering the three online Accutry courses, what else can we offer students to really maximize my time teaching in the classroom? So one of the things that we looked into is we offer, or require, Spanish of all of our seventh and eighth grade students, but what about other foreign languages that our kids don't have a chance to dabble in? So, we picked a program called Middlebury. We looked at a couple of them, it's a Rosa Stone type program, Middlebury had a little bit more depth to it, and when we were able to test some of the different platforms, that's the one we picked up. And so, this year for the first time, we are offering German as an exploratory during that time, so we have two students taking German, we have four students taking French right now, and then we have two students taking Mandarin Chinese. So I have Sophie Gimli here, to talk to us a little bit about her experience trying to learn Chinese through an online class.
So, I'm taking Mandarin, and something that I like so far, that is like how it's online, and there's more opportunities. And so far, I have learned simple greetings and numbers. And doing an online program is fun and it's easy to learn, but I would like to have a teacher come in, because working with a person is better, because you can ask questions and have one-on-one time. I love taking a language, because it's fun and it's something that you can use in the future. For example, at Good Job, they're probably gonna pick someone that can speak another language over someone that can't. And another thing to add is that this would continue on for the quarter, I would like for this to continue on for more than just one quarter, because if it did, then I could get more, I can learn more about the language and not just like a little bit.
Thanks, Sophia. So then, our third opportunity is with online coding. In the past, we had an elective that very basic level, looked at Scratch coding, getting kids introduced to Scratch, getting kids introduced to writing code, thinking it to a makey makey simple circuit board to make it do things. But we can really delve into offering much beyond that, because quite honestly, that's where my scope of knowledge ended. So, I was only able or confident in teaching kids the scope of coding that I really understood at a level that I felt like I could support them. So, in looking at this online opportunities, we went searching for, similar to what we found with the foreign language, an opportunity where a program could teach kids a deeper depth of knowledge than in the structure of the building we must prepare to teach. So, the two that we have kids in right now, we have access to more, but the ones that kids have chosen to take are Coding 201, which is kind of the next level of Scratch, it's still showing things in blocks, but the blocks are much more complex than what's at the Scratch level. And then we have two kids who have chosen to dive into JavaScript, and are sitting trying to figure out parentheses and spaces and commas and commas all day. And so, we also have access to HTML and CSS. Thank you. That students just haven't chosen to take as full courses at this point. The students are doing, from my seventh and eighth grade perspective, very, very well with the program. They are coding things that I could never code, but they are able to explain to people how they got to that code, and then how they could use that code to do something else. The cool thing about the online coding one is that we had purchased this subscription for seventh and eighth grade students, but the four students I actually have here to speak to about this experience are from our fifth and sixth grade elective block. And so what happened was, Janine Stoppa, who teaches our fifth and sixth grade Scratch coding elective block, reached out to me and said, I have a group of kids who are really beyond the scope of what we had prepared that course to teach them, they've taken it before, they've done it on their own, what else can we offer them? And so because we purchased as a school, this subscription to the platform Tinker, I was able to go in and work with Janine and say, here's kind of the next step. And these kids were able to continue on and not be stuck in this simple Scratch coding loop. So, Grant, go ahead and tell us about your coding experience so far this quarter.
I think the Tinker program is far better than Scratch program, in that it allows you to learn many other coding languages besides just the basic Tinker coding language. You can learn lots of languages, and even though our school hasn't purchased the full like, the full lesson, full amount of lessons for these more advanced coding languages, since I have, since I've been studying these more advanced languages such as HTML, JavaScript at home, Tinker allows me to better, better practice and expand these abilities on my own spare time.
Thanks, Grant. Colton?
I personally like Tinker more than Scratch, because Scratch is more like a trial and error, and then you figure out how to do it after a long period of time. And with Tinker, it tells you how to do it, and then you go off and do it by yourself.
Jessica?
So, the thing about Scratch though, I see many people are choosing Tinker. What I think is better about Scratch is where in Tinker, it tells you what to do, and you just have to put those blocks down, tells you exactly what blocks to do. But Scratch, it says what you have to do, and it shows a few things about what the blocks do, if you go on like tutorials, but then it's for you to use freely. And in Tinker, it says, oh, I want this character to move 10 steps, and you have to do this. But in Scratch, you can freely add like 15 or 5 if you want. So, Scratch, even though Tinker, it does teach you better, Scratch is more of a wide variety of what you want to do.
Teresa?
What I personally hope to learn in Tinker is more JavaScript and HTML, because most games are coded in JavaScript and HTML.
So, some of the other cool outcomes that we've had by offering these online electives, this is the first year that Mr. Jeff has offered a class called Band Plus. So students would have the option to take Band every day of the week if they chose to. There was a student who started in my online class doing JavaScript, and after about three days, he said, this I want to say, because this is all online, can I just continue doing JavaScript at home and go be in Band Plus? So I can have Band every day and still learn JavaScript. So one of the cool things about having an online elective is that he is now able to take Band and Band Plus, and then I log into the program to track his progress, he's also keeping up on the JavaScript. And so we were able to kind of offer this kid three electives a week, or three electives a quarter, where we previously wouldn't have the option to do that. The other cool outcome so far is that we had a new movement, an eighth grader who had never taken Spanish before, in looking at what the best fit for her was going to be, she had a little bit of experience coming in in French, and so, working with Becky Appelman and Jay, we were able to decide that it's a better fit for her as a new eighth grade movement, to not try to catch up in the eighth grade Spanish class where she's letting me behind, but she's instead doing the French foreign language program during what would be her Spanish class time. She's also doing very well. So we were able to kind of customize that student's eighth grade experience to match what she's done other places. So, currently looking at what we have going on from the seventh and eighth grade level, I have 12 kids in Accutry, I have 10 in foreign languages, and I have eight in coding, which means I was able to take my class time where I was servicing a process of 24 students. This quarter, I have 30 students in there, and it works very, very well. They all come in, they have their computers, they have their headphones, they get to work, they're getting their things through their online platforms, or through a classroom. So we're able to expand not only the number of different opportunities, but the number of kids taking advantage of those opportunities. Questions for me, or more importantly, for the kids who are actually living it every other day of their lives here at school?
For coding, have you done any research to see what languages are up and coming versus JavaScript and HTML? A lot of the industry's done.
What's on the horizon?
Well, besides HTML, JavaScript, CSS, Python, and Tinker, and Tinker block coding, there are some other languages that could be added, but so far I've not been documenting anything as a work in progress.
Thanks, Grant.
Our hope is to continue to build their skillset, so they can continue, you know, doing it from scratch, to work their way up to, obviously, you've got JavaScript, HTML, Delphi, all some of those other ones that are there, or even get into some really hardcore C++, Visual Basic, because that's actually starting to come back a little bit too.
Python, R are the big languages for a good scientist, which is gonna be huge, or is huge.
This is why we pay for a program, see? Way above my level. These kids are way smarter than us.
Sounds like we need to bring Jewel into class.
That's right, anytime, it's a good idea. Any other questions for our students?
This is Sophia, right?
Yes.
You talked about liking having a teacher if you're teaching, with a hybrid work, where maybe once a week that you would be able to go online and have a teacher answer your questions and help you with, to that, would that be a little better situation for you than being purely doing it?
I've taken lots of like Mandarin classes, I've taken outside of school, like since I was really young. So, I don't know, I think it would be best to have like a teacher come in. Like, we had that when I was at the primary school, so it was like years ago. So I think, I really like working with a person, so I think we should have someone come in, and that would probably be easier, and maybe more people would take foreign languages, because someone's coming in.
But probably the problem is that how many Mandarin teachers are available?
Exactly, yes. So the other thing that's kind of really interesting, and one of the things that I led with like 30 kids on the first stage, is that not everybody is a good online learner. And so, everybody is going to try really hard this quarter to be a good online learner, and I'm really there guiding them and checking in with them regularly, saying, this is where you should be in progress. But if our students can figure out as seventh or eighth graders whether online learning is something that works for them, that potentially has the benefit throughout the rest of their life. I was talking to a teacher the other day, who was like, I would save tons of money at UWM if I just would've known that I couldn't do online classes. And she had spent money trying to get an online graduate degree that she eventually realized like, I don't do well with online learning, I need, like Sophia said, that face-to-face interaction, I need somebody I can go check in with. But if our kids never have the opportunity to try online learning at this level, then it's much later in life that they first have that opportunity. And so, one of the outcomes I hope for, I certainly hope that they learn their languages and that they enjoy their virtual internships, but I also hope from the life skill side, that they learn those time management pieces, and they learn whether an online method is a way that they can learn, or whether they need to look for those hybrid methods, or the in-person face-to-face methods, because I think that's just a good lifelong skill that they can know about yourself as a learner and as a person, is whether you can learn that way. Because it's different, like Sophia said, it's different than Becky Appelman standing up in front every day teaching kids how to speak Spanish, it's just a different.
Were there any opportunities for soft skill, soft skill type classes that you looked at versus some of the, you know, coding and building classes?
Can you give me an example of a soft skill that you'd like taught, and I can tell you before you have it incorporated elsewhere?
Grit, fossils?
Yeah. So, I try as best I can, the Accutry classes are developed in direct partnership with those businesses, so each of those courses you see represents eight hours of my time and the business's time committed to developing those together. So, on the front end, I sit down for about four hours with somebody from their company, and we talk about like, what does it take to really do those jobs? There's also videos embedded throughout those programs, where a project manager from TryNorth Builders talks to kids about what it takes to be a project manager, and one portion of each of those videos is what are all the skills that are just life skills that you weren't directly taught in college? And so that's where those project managers, or those different people in different trades are telling kids like, I learned measurement in Cal, or like, I learned measurement, I need to know how to measure, but it's also really important that I know how to problem solve, and how to work through a situation when I haven't been given a direct step-by-step set of answers. So, the purpose in those Accutry classes of doing the videos is to help kids get to hear from somebody other than me, somebody working in these jobs in the real world, how all those soft skills that we talk about really are the driving factor to what will make you successful in those jobs. It's not necessarily the content skills that you were taught in school. The other piece of that is just continuing to watch them try to work through these online programs and learn in that way for the first time. I think we're working a lot of those soft skills, like time management, like grit, when they don't understand what it is that they're supposed to be doing. I like to step back for a minute and be like, well, let's look back at the classroom, like, have you read all the steps and directions? Have you opened all the documents that were attached today? Because I think oftentimes in school, good, bad, or otherwise, for the sake of us moving progress forward, we do sometimes give our kids a lot of support or a lot of answers when they ask those questions, instead of pushing them to seek the answers on their own. So one of the benefits of online learning is I can take a step back for a minute and say, the answers are there someplace, you just need to reopen the documents and look again, which I think is that skill of sticking with it and grit, and those things that we also want to instill in our students. So, while not directly called the grit lesson, I think it's infused throughout the opportunities that we're giving our kids. Anything else? Alright, well, thank you guys for coming.
Thank you, very, very much.
Appreciate you, Grant. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colton? Thank you. Thank you.
Mom, Dad, and brothers, sisters, thank you so much for coming, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we're on to people of the minutes. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any additions, corrections? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold at same time, motion's carried. We've got the financial report and bill list.
Excellent. I completely screwed it up last month, so.
Oh, okay. So you missed me. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Right, so, about your listing for August 22nd through September 18th, 2019, general funds payroll checks numbers 553749 through 553751 for $734.58. Next direct deposit numbers 900050040 through 900050155 for $123,101.55. Wire transfers for payroll liabilities, wires numbers 201900049 through 201900063 for For total payroll of $594,341.85. Next comes payable checks numbers 53829 through 53864 for $52,462.65. Next we have AP wire transfer number 201900048 for $122.81. Next we have a credit card transaction number 82019 for $37,253.60. Next ACH direct deposit numbers 192000048 through 192000068 for $107,252.85. For total comes payable of $262,390.14. For total disbursements, $856,731.99.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the financial report and bill list. Are there any questions? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold at same time, motion's carried. Okay, we are on to delegations to be heard, and nobody asked to speak. Julie, wanna speak?
I'm good.
So we're past that, we are on to administrative report, we've got acceptance of donations, we've got PTO.
Big thank you to PTO for asking for over $2,800 to expand some of our maker space opportunities. The main dollars of this donation went to classroom storage, to kind of continue to house a lot of the materials as we continue to expand their program, as well as a significant electrical upgrade. When you walk into our maker room now, we've got basically drop electric over all of the, or the middle tables, instead of having to be next to a wall for power. We have now power coming right to the tables, so the kids can do all of their robotics, their gluing, their cutting, whatever might be requiring power, right at their fingertips now. So a big, big thank you, and if you get a chance to step in there, it's really quite cool. So, a big thank you to PTO's grant, and again, just looking for an approval, a motion to approve the $2,830.25 from PTO for the primary classroom space.
I'll make a motion to approve the PTO donation of $2,083.25 for the primary maker space classroom.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold at same time, motion's carried. We're on to personnel action, we have resignation.
Would like to thank Mr. Andy Boucher for his 24 years of service. Mr. Boucher has taken a new position, an expanded position with Monopoly Falls School District, but again, a big impact to our school and community. Known by many, many of us that have gone through Mr. Boucher's classrooms and have seen him perform and the productions at the Christmas and the Hahahaha Spring Concerts too as well. So, we have his letter of resignation there. To replace Mr. Boucher, we'd like to recommend Mrs. Janice Broden, who comes to us from the Germantown School District. She has over eight years of experience, and is a professional singer, and is a member of our youth community as well. So, recommending, a motion to approve her individual contract as presented as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of presentation of Andy Boucher as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion. All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold at same time, motion's carried.
I'll make a motion to approve the individual teacher contract for Janice Broden as presented. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion. All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold at same time, motion's carried. We are on to information.
We're off to a great school year, so it's a great start to this school year. You've obviously heard some of the new things, one of the new opportunities that we've offered to our intermediate school students, and again, the new rating curriculum is continuing to be supported, and we continue to work through.
And again, the new rating curriculum is continuing to be supported and we continue to work through some of those, those new things as well. But things are moving forward very well in connection to this 19, 20 school year. So very happy with the way we started.
Do we have any committee reports?
No committee reports.
Okay, we're on to principal reports.
I want to start out, we had a very difficult staff meeting this morning based upon our moment of silence from this morning. Just want to commend Ron on his bringing the staff together and having things organized for us. Jackie and Ron and I met before school this morning to get some things in place. The kids were amazing. The staff was amazing. Not an easy time for any of us. We've had some freshmen come back and visit Mrs. Nimcek and Mrs. Kryowski in particular, just to check in. So the Merton family's still strong, but it was, it was, it was an interesting weekend and a kind of tough day. So, but we do have some cool stuff to share. As Ron said, we've had a great start. Becca and I just kind of dropped in some pictures so you could see what was going on. I'll let you talk about your kids first.
I think about both buildings. One of the new things is almost 100% participation in that right start to go. And so these are just some of those highlights. Kids are eager to get the books that are in the incredible library that they have at the primary. And then you can see these young gentlemen are ready to get back at it. So that was really nice to see them at the beginning of the year.
Our first day was, it was a little rainy, but then it cleared up right before the day started. So the ground's a little wet out there. But we had some really, really cool relationship building things that happened that whole first week. It wasn't that we did two academics, but just so that kids could get to know one another in each of their classrooms and just had a really good start. So we're talking a lot about relationships and just being there for one another. And then we're going to have some, some pictures of different content areas. So language arts wise, up on the left is a mini lesson. It must've been the first Thursday when the Packers played the Bears because Mr. Fleishman was all decked out in his Aaron Rodgers jersey. He played well that evening. Mini lesson on the left and then down below is Mrs. Globig. They started their book talks already. So she's with, it was one of the most animated conversations I've ever seen in a classroom as these girls and Mrs. Globig just had a conversation about, I think they were reading Divergent. And just the, the banter back and forth between them and they all knew what their, what the book was about. So it was really cool to watch that happening.
So language arts continued to be a focus last year with the strategic plan. Reading was kind of that cycling through. You can see, we can still see that. We have partnerships going on. That's been the launch of the year. That first unit is all about getting kids to know that they work in partners, they're shared reading. And then you can see too, the kids are excited to have their books. This year is all about writing and so kind of like re digging into what we're doing and what we're doing well. And then looking at different ways and opportunities to take that instructional practice of workshop, that delivery model, and apply it then to our, our writing, like in literacy and reading that we've familiarized ourselves with over the last couple of years. So there's a lot to do there.
You get to start. It's a little back and forth.
No, okay. Well, I forgot.
That's the pack.
I thought it was children were early.
No, they're making us sound really not very intelligent.
Here is, this is Mrs. Stiller's classroom, I believe, and they're working on some math there. And that was that first unit last year. My understanding is the math when it got launched was kind of like, oh, we can't do this unit. It was a new curriculum. We didn't see an implementation difference, I think. And now meeting with Martika, myself, and our team meetings, everyone's like, it's so good this year. Like it just took that first year. And so the students there are working in a partnership to kind of reassess, see what they were doing and what business strategy that they're using. So that's the second grade.
And on the left is in Mrs. Gardino's class, they're doing a breakout EDU session. So they have to work in partners to try and figure out how to get all of the answers to all of these different problems. And it was interesting, the only computers are the ones that are on that, on the cabinet, they're on the, on the desktop. Everybody else is working paint, paper, and pencil and they are having conversations about math that you just would not believe in. Helping each other out, just a great, great start to the year there. Social studies here, in the upper left-hand corner, kids are working on geography. Seventh grade social studies has a geography focus. They're talking about different areas of the country. So those kids were working together, all of them had their own little hearts. And then one of my favorite things is when Mrs. Nimcek teaches the preamble to the Constitution and she brings in the song. So you can hear the kids singing it down the hallway. They sing it at lunchtime. They sing it at recess because they're actually tested on, on, not on the song itself, but on the words of the preamble to the Constitution. So that's always a fun way to start out the social studies stuff there.
Science here, we have first grade and they are digging into plants. Great time for that. And then also they're looking, one of their learning targets is I can see the grass and I can determine when I need to mow it. And so students, that is one of the times, you know, they were trying to figure out, I said, we could use that to have the science household. So you can see they're eager to show those. So they're all working, some of that space being outdoors as well, which is great to see.
And upper left-hand corner, snap circuits in, in science with Mr. Wagler there. Just watching the hands-on stuff and all the things they have to do to get the, get everything all figured out. And then this pizza in the bottom picture there, they're doing some 3D sketching. I have enough trouble with 2D sketching and she's bringing 3D sketching in and just watching her do that. Great modeling there. She's on the smart board showing the kids how to do that. The, the smart board has, has been a lifesaver for the teachers to be able to have that, that projection capability there. We're the only ones in Spanish. I'll tell them about that one. So we have on, Mrs. Opperman does a great job. As the kids are transitioning, they're learning numbers in seventh grade Spanish. So there was a song going on and the kids are singing this, I guess songs seem to be an important part of it. But they're singing all the vocabulary for the, for the numbers and then telling time in, in seventh grade as well. The students come up and have to do that. It's, it's interesting as the kids are cheering on the other kids who are at the board trying to get the right answers for what actual time it is. And notice it's not a digital clock. So Mrs. Everett is proud because she doesn't let the kids use a digital clock when they sign themselves in or out of school when they arrive either.
So here's P G. That's one thing that Ms. Monson and Ms. Seager continue to do is having chain champions. They've been working on many different things, including launching our recess playground rules and expectations. That's something that they go over, talking about Gaga Ball and things that I'm new to too, to know how to enforce that. But then also finding ways that we encourage kids to have help and healthy and kind of going back to the soft skills comment or when we really think about what's that social emotional need is really around those competencies and that's what she continues to build as well. So nice job there. Those are just some of the, some of the chain champions there.
And then on the left is, there was some ultimate frisbee going on inside the gym there. And then the fitness room, that's, that's a bunch of, I think that's eighth graders here. I can't really tell because I'm too far away from the screen. But our fitness room is not very big, but they still pack people in there. First, second, third, and fourth hour smells pretty good. And then we get later in the day, not so good. So one of our PTO, our, our, one of our fundraisers for PTO is, is trying to expand our, our fitness room and get some, some circulation in there. But the kids are really enjoying the new fire, the new fire curriculum. So there's, there's more kettle balls, there's heavy bars and all those different movement exercises there. It's really kind of a cool space. And these are two of the different music teachers, Mr. Worrie on the right. He was doing a round, Rover, Row Your Boat and a whole bunch of other movements as he's going through the fifth grade choir there. And on the left is, is the band. And if you saw this more a couple of weeks ago, I had the first fifth grade note like I always do. It was amazingly good three times in a row. Just going to say, but I think they'll sound better at the concert. It's going to always get better. I'll let you go.
And just here is where, just highlighting Baker Space. That's definitely well-used space, not only when teachers are there, but also in other times. Right here at the bottom, that is second, that's five pairs. They are learning to draw and paint based on the whole, on statues and kind of the elements of that. And Tom, we, the whole first week of school was all about how Humpty Dumpty fell with the egg and how you put him back together. And what does that mean in the dynamics of that? So Karen did a really nice job leading all that as well.
I'm not going to talk very much about the electives. Mary and the kids did a really good job of that. But I, I do want to talk about the staff because our fifth and sixth graders had to step up and come up with, with electives that they felt really comfortable sharing with the kids. Mrs. Frye in the middle there, she has a yoga class that meets in here and it's, it's, it's full. There's like 30 kids in here doing yoga. It's great. And then Mr. Clink is still doing Wisconsin Math Hoops. That's the loudest elective we have. I think it might be louder than band because it's a very competitive math-based game and the kids, they just love it. But then I also look at our seventh and eighth grade teachers who are doing electives. We have Mustang News right now that Mrs. Opperman and Mrs. Nimcek are doing. We've got a cooking class that's going on for our eighth graders. Mary does pallet to project. There's just so many different opportunities for the kids that are above and beyond what the normal electives are. And we're just really happy that our, our teachers have stepped up and taken on that extra responsibility. It's really kind of a cool thing.
So this is just something we threw in here as well. This was in the smore. It's just around this understanding of friendship. It says friendship is born at the moment when one person says to another, you too? I thought I was the only one and I couldn't zoom the right ear. I think that that's how we all feel as adults as well. So sometimes that, me being new here, I feel like Jay and the admin and everyone else has kind of taken my hand and let me know that I'm not the only one. That's really key because it is about building relationships. And that was a cool picture that we have some after our rules. And then going back to building relationships with our families, I will just start with the pictures there. We definitely had the PTO, had their Colvers Night, huge event. It was really nice to see a lot of people. Some of you were there as well. Thank you to the staff that came out. We had about six primary staff that came on to help with that. Down below is the first PTO family night that held at, at the primary, the primary playground out there just to play and have our dinners together. And that was a lot of fun as well. And you can see there I have a couple of parents getting to know each other as well. And then the last thing was on the onset of the year, the staff at the primary went ahead and they painted rocks and hid them around the neighborhoods and the areas just to get us back to our purpose. It's really about our community, being a service to them and the relationships that we can build and that excitement that you have for children to come to us. That's really where we're at at our core. So there's a little picture of somebody who found Ms. Nenens and she painted it four times. She sprayed it and melted off. She painted it and melted off, but she didn't give up and that was a really nice rock. So I'll go to Jeanette on that one.
And then open house, Mr. Jupp had a summer jazz band. So I said to him, well, where are you guys going to play? You've been practicing all summer long? I said, how about you come to open house? So they played two sets at, at open house in between the two schools. It was a blustery day if you remember, but he was definitely prepared because not all of them, some of the music might've blown away, but not all of it. So they were still able to have a really good concert. Amazing. The, the parents stopped by like, this is really cool. It was nice to be able to showcase our, our talent, our kids' talents there. This is more you.
So well, as both of us, one thing, I just have pictures. So one thing is just continuing to build the relationships with our staff. And that is, this was on the onset of the school year, both Jay and I, Karen, had some type of a potluck or a dinner that we provided, lunch for staff. And we just went to Polworth Park here at the primary and shout out to the MAA and the village. They allowed us to be inside that beautiful facility, but also then the MAA donated all the drinks and things, not the alcoholic ones, but the other ones. But anyway, each of the staff could have that. And that was just a great celebration that was able to pull everybody together to have some time together on that 19th August.
A big salad, salad lunch was good. And then this, this is just some of the learning that we did to start off the school year. Just having everybody together in one place, hearing the same message, learning the same things is, is so important and, and big, big space, lot of learning. It was a lot of fun. That's all we have though?
Thanks, you too.
Okay, we're on to new business. We have the review of the workshop that we did. When did you go, Tuesday?
Yeah, we spoke Tuesday at 17:00. So.
Seventeen, yes.
Yep, seventeen. So, so thank you for everybody who was able to make that workshop and really appreciate that. We had a great turnout. It didn't count, but I think we were well over 50 people, I think. Some of the staff members pointed to as well. So, so I guess within your board packet, obviously there's collected some local school districts staff calendars as well as I have included the Arrowhead, Arrowhead tentative calendar for 2021 to kind of help guide a little bit about the start of the school year and a proposed end of the school year too as well. So just going to open up the floor about some thoughts or questions that people have been thinking about or next steps.
I'll go first. So I think that, like, this is not necessarily going to be a logical train of thought, but just bear with me. A number of different ideas, right? So I think we had a really good turnout and we had a good conversation and gathered a lot of feedback. There were probably a number of people who didn't speak up for one reason or another. They needed to gather their thoughts first or whatever, right? So in terms of making sure that we have all the feedback that people are wanting to contribute, I think it would be a good idea for us to, us being Ron, to send out an all-staff email on behalf of the board to saying, we had this workshop. Thank you for coming and providing feedback. If you had time to think about it and wanted to offer any other information or ideas or thoughts, please, you know, send us an email and, you know, you know, within the next two weeks or whatever, right next week or something. Just to make sure and, you know, reiterate that we, we want that input. Because I'm sure there are people that didn't feel comfortable or just had to wrap their head around something or whatever. So that's idea number one. I think in terms of the professional development, days before school stuff, I think, you know, the biggest feedback was there was too much information packed too tightly together. And stuff tended to, you know, go along and ran into the next thing and it all just kind of spiraled. That, you know, in, in terms of schedule, we were trying to play catch-up for a lot of those days. So the outcome of that comment being, be a little, you know, we should think about the way that things are scheduled and bake in some buffer time and some stuff like that. And maybe that means that we end up scheduling fewer things in that period of time and we just have to prioritize. You know, if we limited to, you know, half a day of presenting information at you and the other half of the day is, you know, meeting with coaches or team verticals or, you know, curriculum work with your team or prep time or, or whatever, like, you know, scheduling more like that. So it's not, you're sitting there for three days straight getting new stuff. And this year was a little bit different too because we brought someone in. And so from a time perspective, we were kind of bound to that in terms of delivery of information. I think that's, that was great that we did that, but that also kind of exacerbated that problem. And then my other idea or that I was thinking about, or proposal maybe, I guess, was to, you know, focus more on trying to reduce the scope of what we do before school and maybe try and get it into a week of time. And then take those days that we, you know, remove from the beginning of the school year and spread them through the rest of the school year with the purpose of, you know, allowing for, you know, some team verticals if that needs to happen. But really having dedicated time to looking back at, you know, the curriculum, the new curriculum we're doing in whatever given year and assessing how it's going and being able to, you know, for, continue to work on that curriculum throughout the year and having time dedicated for that as a way of kind of, you know, improving that, all of those transitions, right? As opposed to everything's in the beginning of the, you know, the first two weeks and you have to get everything ready that you're going to get ready. Allowing for some of that time throughout the school year. So those are our ideas. In terms of how we move forward, it's probably not fair slash beneficial to try and get a committee of teachers together because I don't think you're ever going to get like a reasonable representation of the staff as a whole. Right? You're, you're going to get, you know, a handful of people that either volunteer or that we pick. And it's such, you know, the, the desires and the opinions are probably so diverse, I don't know that it's going to be representative. So as we move forward with developing whatever the calendar solution is, it probably needs, you know, the information that we decide we want from staff probably needs to be more in the form of surveys and that sort of thing. So those are some of my ideas or thoughts. Whether people have thoughts. So those are some of my ideas or thoughts, whether people have thoughts.
I definitely want to hear more from the staff. Because I agree with you, there's probably a fair amount, maybe not a fair amount, but people that didn't speak that probably just wouldn't feel more comfortable doing it in a different setting. And so we've got to allow for that opportunity. Also, the, the needs felt different at the different buildings and it did, a lot of it seemed to stem from summer school and not being able to get into, in the primary building, get into your classrooms until the very end, right before school started or even sometimes the day of open house. But it sounded like that's already being addressed.
We are going to be working through, from an administrative team standpoint, about a possible new summer school layout, really taking a look at that August opportunity. And ultimately, summer school helps with our revenue limit. And so we'll be working closely with Sherry at our summer school team and John to really kind of put a proposal out there and that'll be here in October about something to think about because there is that, that financial end. But ultimately, it would free up the building a little bit more, obviously, as we weren't able to accommodate several requests. And we were very clear with our primary school staff as well as our intermediate staff about when the opportunity to get in. I know the analogy was given by one staff member about the road was closed. No, the road was closed for a four hour block of time. And that block of time was expressed and told to them very early on, all the way from April and May about when the opportunities to come on in would, would be. So ultimately, again, we were trying to balance the opportunity for staff to have that freedom and that flexibility. Or do we take a look at, as, as Phil was kind of mentioning, you know, instead of it kind of over encompassing two weeks, do we do something maybe a little bit, you know, into one week and then?
Yeah, potentially, you, you know, if you were to still reserve the two weeks before school, have the first of those two weeks be the professional development and even open house. And then the second week being, you know, they could use their flex time there or they could, you know, just come in unpaid or whatever and, you know, work on their teams. But have the, the building would be ready.
Right, right. And that's really what we need to kind of, that's where we work with our staff on is, okay, when do you want open house? As in, because for open house, a lot of the time they need to have that classroom time to make it nice looking. But ultimately, I know from an intermediate school standpoint, they wanted that team time prior to open house because so many of that pieces of information that go out, especially from the intermediate level, are team information. So it's fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade. And I know even at the primary school that happens too as well. So it's just all that timing of that really needs to be coordinated about what their needs are as well too. So, but, but that's where, you know, how do we find out, get all the voices, you know, obviously through survey, but ultimately, what other ideas do people have that they didn't feel comfortable expressing with? And I feel your point of saying, hey, thank you. One of the outcomes from this meeting today, if the board wants us to move forward would be, hey, thank you very much for those of you who have some feedback, weren't able to share for whatever reason or weren't able to be there. Please contact, you know, the school board and or myself and share that out to everybody too. So, more to come. And then obviously, that, that form of a survey, I think is, is great because if there's an opportunity for us to do something different, whether it could be to expand, you know, when either we're done, you know, get a little bit later in June, or is there an opportunity before school, you know, to kind of have some of those on-demand vertical teams and things like that too? Because the last several years, we have three days that are devoted to the curriculum adoption and those have not been devoted to more, it's been more to team planning than it has for professional development from that standpoint too. So, this upcoming year, like this year, obviously the writing team told us what they wanted to do and what they thought our staff would. And then obviously, to your point, Phil, whenever they, they wanted to bring in a big speaker. And so they wanted two days with that speaker. We actually told the speaker what to present on, so it was perfect. And then the third day was actually, again, a choose your own adventure, which the writing team had asked to have, and that was a half day. And then the second half of that day was designed for them to go and implement and things like that too. So, I also think it comes down to?
Didn't actually end up working that way though, right?
No, they were done at eleven.
In terms of being able to go, well, on this, well, for the choose your own adventure day, yeah.
They were done at eleven, right. And the Colleen Cruz days were basically eight to four, you know? But it also was interactive and ultimately, though she was presenting on ideas that were to help us, you know, not only plan, but to really to implement the curriculum and the instructional approach that we wanted them to. And it was driven by teachers, for teachers, those two days as well. And it, it was interactive. I hope it wasn't just sit and get, sit and get, just kind of being shoved down our throat as some, some words were being used. But I think, Phil, it also comes down to, and I think this was a comment made by, by somebody maybe even after, was I didn't think the staff, the staff might not appreciate the professional development that was given. You know, and how do we get them either more involved or how do we approach it in a way that is meaningful at a time that is beneficial to them? And I think that's kind of your point, Phil, is when do we offer that? And is there more opportunities for days off, which ultimately affect flow of instruction, affect our community because there's more days off? You know, and that's really where, from a school board standpoint, we need to balance that is, is what, what do we value? Do we value a day in September to take a look at data to kind of reset? Because right now, we wait till October. Or we have, for instance, I just was talking to Becca, a team needs a day, so we will give them a day. Okay? We will, we will honor that time by, it's a substitute teachers, we will put them in there and kind of that on-demand type of thing. But, but ultimately, we can, we can do some things creatively to get more vertical teaming. You know, and ultimately, though, it comes down to us controlling more of that time, which we also heard we just want a lot of flexibility with our time. So, and I think Becca kind of highlighted it about, I heard two different things at the beginning of the meeting about, hey, I want some freedom. And then yet, on the flip side of that, it was, but I want time with other people and things like that too. So, and that's really where we're trying to balance because I think Katie or Phil, one of you two said, part of the room really liked, I mean, I had an intermediate school teacher come to me and say, Ron, thank you for the start of the school year. You did exactly what we asked you to do. Because the intermediate staff, the building leadership team brought me in and said, Ron, we really want more freedom. We want that professional respect. And I said, what does that look like? And they said, how about this, this and this? I said, okay, let's try it. No way did we explain that to the primary staff and, you know, there was some of that, you know, and you heard it, you know, how come we didn't have the opportunity to go off campus and, and things. And again, it was just a unique year, given the leadership changeover and our literacy as well as our founding leader there. So.
Well, I think, well, first off, I think it's brilliant that if you guys have identified already that there's a team that needs help, not like addressing that now, I think that's fantastic. And that's the direction, I hope, that we just keep going instead of addressing a problem when the calendar says it's okay to look at it. Outside of Jennifer, none of us are education experts. So for, I would feel comf, I want to gather some more information from the experts and the teachers and the principals and the people that are doing this every day to identify what their needs are before I feel comfortable going.
Yeah, I mean, the, the odd part about this whole conversation, I guess, is the conversation kind of ultimately from the board direction is like, what is the school calendar? But that's not really the problem we're solving, right? The school calendar is almost irrelevant to the conversation. The conversation really is, what does professional development look like? And how does that get done? How is it organized and structured and scheduled and all of that, right? That's really the problem we're trying to solve. The school calendar just kind of falls out from that conversation almost.
I think it's, it's a timely thing, you know, and things in what, and, and again, I don't want to keep saying this over and over, the professional development that is created before school is driven by the curriculum committee responsible for their decisions. This year was writing, a year ago was mathematics, okay, where the team wanted to bring in, we, we brought in somebody from Envisions and that, that was one day. And they had, and then we had another book study for a half day. And then, because again, this year we had three writing days. Last year, we had three math days. One was with the curriculum rep to kind of help guide us. We had a half day of a book study where we jigsawed the mathematical instructional book, best way to describe that. And then we had a day and a half of free plan where the teams, everybody got a chance to, to do what they needed to do to prepare for that upcoming school year. Then we revisited again in October. The math team said, bring the math rep out. Okay, so we brought the math rep out again. It kind of did something now that we were in it. So we brought them back in October. We also brought them back in February because they asked for that again. And actually, the math rep, we're going to be doing some webinars because the math team asked again to say, now that we know, can we do a webinar with this, this lady who really impacted our instruction? Certainly. So we are trying to be as responsive as possible, but we have, this, the PD being developed is not an administrative thing. Obviously, it's through the support of administration, through the support of the student achievement committee. And it's very difficult to reach everybody in that format. And again, we're just trying to be able to reach our goals, to make sure that our people are ready and also give them the respect and the professional time to be able to get ready for kids to come September.
And I think the biggest, well, and this is potentially a one-sided comment, I guess, but the feedback I got was, you know, there was a lot of new information and that was coming from the, you know, Colleen Cruz and the extra, you know, reading day or whatever, the extra literacy day. And there wasn't enough time to digest that, especially with the, with their team. And I, I think that is an applicable statement for more than, you know, just one team, right? In the primary especially.
I can see that because in reviewing the agendas for what the primary school did, Becca did have a half day after we saw the lunch, then it was team time from there. And then on the literacy day on August 26th, I think there was, we had a sand day refresher and I think that was probably more till about 1:30, 2 o'clock. So there, there wasn't a lot of time. So it was two hours.
The hard part is it's all really good information for all of the staff to get, but it's just a lot of information. And so, it's, it's a prioritization game, really is what it comes down to.
And that's where?
You know, moving forward, you know, would we be able to just decide that, you know, the, we're going to have five, you know, days of, you know, defined time that you have to be here before school? Just hypothetically, like, you know, one and a half of those days is you're getting curriculum delivered to you, right? And it's in half-day chunks across three days, right? So it's spread out, you know, and, you know, there's a half day for all the district stuff and there's, you know, you could define the chunks of time and then the curriculum adoption committee of, you know, for, for each year would know, oh, I have a day and a half, this is our format, that I get to use. As opposed to saying, well, what you guys want to do is, oh, well, we want to do this, 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 and then it's, you know, it's two and a half to three days. And now you're just trying to jam all the other stuff that still has to happen anyway?
Right.
Because they're still in team verticals, they're still meeting with the coaches and meeting with the principal, you know, at the beginning of the school year and all that other stuff that needs to happen. So all that stuff just, yeah, all the TPI stuff, all that just gets crunched. So I think that was kind of the, some of the conversation of the schedule and all that stuff.
And I, and I don't disagree with that because from the intermediate staff, they were only on campus for five days. They were on campus for five days.
And they were much happier in our meeting, right? They were much happier about how the first year of school year went.
And, and I think we'd love to be able to, because we kind of, again, we didn't promise anything, but ultimately, we would do that again. We would give that flexibility and that professional courtesy to the primary school so that everybody had this opportunity to meet with their team off campus, wherever they wanted to, that, that opportunity. But then ultimately, have a team day and have a curriculum day. That would be our goal. Next year, if that's still a priority to the, to the team, when I say the team, the, the, the teachers, which I heard from the intermediate school, I mean, don't change a thing. We, we really liked it. But, and like you heard one staff member say, you have some time, you know, it's, if, because if you are like a social studies teacher, you have a lot of time. You have a lot of time assigned, you know, and non-core, their time will come. And, and that's really where with some of those folks, if they find their own professional development or if the district sees something to say, hey, here's a conference that we'd like you to send you to, we swap those days. So we are flexible like that. It's difficult, say, for instance, if we do send people to New York, for instance, to swap out Colleen Cruz here, who's going to talk about some more in-depth things than a, just a general workshop? And that's really where I was like, well, you know, it's still important to, for them to hear that Colleen Cruz component because it was kind of driven by district needs. And it's kind of like, what do you, you know?
And like that specifically, I don't, maybe you, maybe people had commented to you directly, but I don't know that anyone was, you know, complaining about, oh, well, I, I went to Columbia and then I still had to sit here, like.
No, but it's, so we do, sometimes they do talk about, it's like, why, like, can I swap those days? Because it was asked, it was requested and it was a day. And when I explained, like, okay, I get it, thank you, I just thought I'd ask a question, which was very perceptive of them. But, but ultimately, we, we did have somebody from Colleen and yet it wasn't valued by some because for some people, it was just rammed down their throat. There was opportunities in that, in those sessions where, okay, we're going to learn and then now I want you to take 10 minutes to, you know, process and talk. Now, it wasn't a lot of time. And that's really where, Phil, I like your idea to say, hey, if our staff or we find out that we want half-day chunks, for instance, half and then implement, that's always the most ideal way to do it, is you learn and then go implement. Then we just need to be aware of, you know, A, what that plan is. Because that plan this year wouldn't have worked well, we would have probably went that even. Not to say that because we did talk about learn half-day and then does Colleen work with us that with grade levels half-day too as well? We did consider that and ultimately, we thought for the best bank for our buck, we wanted to have people hear that same message because we had such a big learning curve.
Well, and this, this was a weird year, right? Like, you know, math wouldn't have been that way, science wouldn't have been that way. Like, so this, this was a little bit of an anomaly that, you know, kind of made everything worse from a stress perspective, I guess. Just, it was just more information and whatever. But, you know, I think for most of the, most years, at least since I've been involved in any of this, you know, it would, would have been reasonable to say, all right, we're going to have two or three half-days and you're going to learn the information. Because we weren't bringing someone in.
Nope.
We weren't bringing someone in for a couple hours.
First off, Monday, for one of the holidays, yeah.
So that, that schedule wouldn't work.
Right, yeah. So, so we have a lot of flexibility and ultimately, if, for instance, our social emotional learning team is fully aware of, okay, as we get through, we'll have these decisions made well before we need to start making some of those about what the calendar looks like as well as some of the professional development opportunities or timeframes and constraints that we want to use. Yeah, it'll certainly, so when we do turn over to the team, the SEL team, to say, hey, what professional development do we need? Here would be the ideal opportunity to be able to do it this way, from what our staff has said, we'll be able to live within those constraints certainly. And to your point, as long as people kind of understand there might be those odd years where all of a sudden you do have to have either the curriculum rep or somebody from specifically, you know, whether we're talking about science, which is right up on the horizon next year, what do we want to do with that too as well? So, but I think that's where each year, we're, we're small enough to be able to kind of adjust by the fly. But this year, I think we've got an opportunity, given the curriculum in the possible direction for the SEL team to be able to meet some of those needs that we heard about. We can find out through a survey about what is it that they want.
Yeah, well, and I think, I think the staff would appreciate having just a somewhat common structure from year to year of, of what, what that week or two weeks or whatever it is looks like, right? Even if the content changes or, oh, well, this year it's, you know, another writing year, we need another two days or it's a whatever, like, it can get adjusted, but just to have, and I don't know how common it is.
It's been, it's been very, very common. And the, the one adjustment that we made, kind of the difference was if they didn't want the Friday before Labor Day. Okay. And then, so we took that out and then from, from last year, what we heard from the intermediate school is, is don't make Thursday a happy day because we're shot after open house. Ron, is there any way you can be done after open house? Certainly. So we kind of backward designed everything. And this is where we, we met a lot of people's needs with this format. Now, from a professional development format, that's where we might have been like, if people are on overload, we're not meeting anybody's needs. So then it just comes down to that structure. But, but then do we, you know, when do we want to have open house? That's really kind of, do we want to tinker with that date? If, if we do, then we just need to backward design time for our staff to have team time as well as individual prep time. And in the past, that's been three days leading up to that open house day. So, so lots, lots of things to consider on that, right? Because if, in order for our staff to be ready for open house, in my opinion, and Jay and Becca, feel free to jump in, they would need three days ahead of time, three contractual days.
And in previous years, we had done that. This year, it works that way too?
No, in the past, we've always given them, open house has always been in the second week. week. Because typically, we've been Monday through Thursday. This year was weird, because we had nine days. Typically, we've always had eight. That's been the, the format typically, has been eight the last several years. This year, we got nine because we were, we chopped off a student day based on being done June 5th. So we put that, that student day, we put it in front of the school year. So that's what we did. Instead of 177, we took 176 and put, again, a day is a day is a day in front of the starting of the student.
Is there any reason that open house needs to be during the week of the professional development stuff?
I think we can do, so, I mean, there's, there's some people that have open houses the first week in August.
Well, I was actually going the other direction of, if you did all the professional development stuff on the first of two weeks, and then open house was the second of two weeks, right? Like, a Tuesday right before school, or Wednesday right before school.
That's what it is now.
Yeah, but you're, they wouldn't be in the, there wouldn't be any scheduled professional development that second week. So they could come in and do more prep work or whatever, if they, right? Either two, one and two.
One of the things, Phil, the reason why we put that in front this year was, is our intermediate staff and a lot of the staff said, Ron, if I've got to worry about my classroom, whatever you're telling me, I got other things to worry about. So I'm worried about what my open board is going to look like compared to somebody talking to me about my new curriculum. So, that was the reason why this year, in talking to our staff about, hey, what happens if we had you complete your days before August 19th? Because that was the day that we started professional development. And the directive was, we want your classroom open house ready by August 19th, so you don't have to worry about that. Hence, we asked them to complete two days ahead of time, because I want our staff worrying about what they're learning instead of that open house day. So, that's really where, on the 19th was a, the two days before August 19th was...
That's where the commentary came from, that they weren't actually getting to their classroom.
Correct. There was, there was a time, and that's where I think we can, we can work around that. And I think we're, we're trying to solve that, and we're trying to solve that problem from a different avenue. It's not, it's, obviously, the teacher planning is one piece. John's got his facility needs that are really rocking and rolling. We have a recruitment of teacher concern there, too, as well. So, so we're going to be addressing that and trying to take that bone block out. But what we really want to do, kind of, Phil, to kind of circle back to your question, is we didn't want teachers to worry about their classroom. We wanted that as ready as possible. And one of the teachers said, basically, everything outside of your open house outfit hanging. I said, yeah, kind of like that. So you could focus on the learning instead of, oh, I've got all this stuff to do, which...
Our student bags.
Our name tags or something like that, too.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I, I can understand that desire. The, the complication is, there's probably also a desire to have a bunch of team time, working time after getting introduced to the curriculum to work on the curriculum. So, it kind of needs to...
And that's really where, that's where you need to, well, that's your point.
Because it's got, you have to have three days, and then you have to have three days of curriculum.
Maybe we want to move, move open house earlier. So you could get that out of the way, phew, catch your breath, and then come on back and then learn. Maybe that, I mean, that, again, we'd have to talk to our staff about that. If that's the case, obviously, we just need to communicate, because there's a lot of people that work around vacations, but we already work with folks already. But, and maybe, Phil, that's, the question is, is do you want open house before professional development? So it's really not hanging over your head. Because if we just moved open house to a week earlier, maybe the Thursday before, and you gave, hey, there's three days that are there, and if you can't get, get yourself, because I know Jay's team, fifth grade, for instance, couldn't come up with a date that they all can make it, so they just said, well, let's just do the district assigned days on the 19th and 26th, if they were all on campus. So we set three days and say, hey, so if you can't make it, I mean, there's a lot of different ways we could do this.
Why don't you and your administrative staff put a model together for us? Get the survey. I agree with both Phil and Katie. I think you shared it, and only eight people spoke.
Eight or nine spoke.
Yeah. So, there's a lot of people that had something, and people missed it. But you put a model together for us, so we can float that from the board, float that in front of the staff. Because, as Katie says, you are the experts, and you know what your staff needs. We're not going to be able to shape.
So, I...
So first, we're going to do two things. One, we're going to do an email out to a certain, a survey, email out to all staff who want to contribute more. And then a model of what Ron thinks would be good, or...
Well, I think that's, our administrative team is, you know, for instance, because we can, to Phil's point, we can put in, you know, do we want a day in September, for instance? Because I was talking to some of our specialists and saying, you know, maybe a day at the end of September to take a look at and give people time to take a look at their student data, to really start to individualize plans moving forward, might, might be valuable. Do we, you know, that, that could be something. If we want vertical time, you know, do we want time, you know, for instance, I still think if it's valuable, maybe this is me personally, and this is where a survey would be important, in my opinion, to say, do we want to do something more frequent before school starts? For instance, because I think the big question for our staff is, is how come we have so many days before school? And how do we spread out some of either those meetings or some of that professional development? I think we could put together a plan and a model of that and say, hey, if we came together at 7:30, between 7:30 and 8:15 on Wednesdays, every day, every Wednesday of the school year or through whatever, we can highlight them and say, hey, and that could occupy two dates, two contractual dates that can be removed from the beginning of the school year. Spread them out, that could possibly either consist of a literacy team meeting, a data meeting, professional development, that, you know, something that we want to bring together for what we're seeing curriculum-wise. Just another opportunity, kind of, either reset, but, but really focus.
But I think the desire, the comments about wanting to meet throughout the school year from the staff's perspective was for them to meet with each other, right? Grade below, grade above, team meeting, development, not come to a district meeting.
No, no, right. Because, right, because what I would do, what I would recommend on those Wednesday mornings is, is we would set it up to say, K1 meets this week, 2, 3, 3, 4, 4, you know, do some of that. Now, obviously, it's intermediate school, our seventh and eighth grade team is already there, you know, but, you know, because they're, they're together, and they've got common fighting time.
Well, the seventh, the eighth was sixth, right?
Sixth grade, too. So, so I think that's really where, and I'm not, we could do some professional development during that time, but the vertical stuff, that right now, the only opportunity we have is in October, without release time pulling people off, is October, January, and February. That's really when we have opportunities. And our staff has, in my opinion, have really come to really like that time for their own team planning. Because if I say to second grade, hey, I need you to, it's going to take two hour, you know, to, basically, two hours of their day, because second grade needs to meet the third grade, and needs to meet the first grade. We can possibly accomplish that through, you know, 7:30 meetings, if that's something that they would like to see. If not, then we go back to the drawing board. But I think a survey with some ideas that we can create from an administrative team about what might be possible with those. I think we've all got a lot of ideas. And, and ultimately, we can put a recommendation forward, because I, I truly don't want to go below 176 days of school personally. I think that contact with our kids is super important, and I know there's always the beginning of the year and the end of the year, but right now...
We can also address, too, and we talked about this a little after the meeting, contractual staff days.
If that's something that the, the board wanted to, from, from selfishly.
Some of the questions, like, do the teachers actually want to work more days and get paid more? Or do they just, they want to work the days that they, that are already in their contract, right? Like, adding more days might not be something that the staff actually wants.
No, I'm talking about, we're talking about...
Oh, okay, got it.
You would be really popular, Phil. Yes, yes. So, so a lot of things. So, so how about this? How about we, again, as an administrative team, we got an administrative team meeting coming up here on Thursday. It's, basically, what I can do is send out something to the staff tomorrow that says, hey, a couple things. First of all, thank you, everybody, for coming. As a board, they, they want to extend a, you know, an opportunity to express anything that hasn't been expressed yet, that if you didn't, either weren't able to be there, or if you didn't want to express your opinions, please let myself or the board know. Ultimately, I can put all of your email addresses in this email to let them know. And then, if there is anything shared, let us know, because we heard and we took notes a little bit about what some opportunities might exist. There wasn't a ton of ideas about what to do with the, like, this year, the nine days before. Now, from a professional development standpoint, obviously, we can design those if it's three days, for instance, Phil. We can create opportunities that are half-day, half-day, half-day compared to two full and then one day of learning, where it's just kind of just a swimming and things.
And, and that's where I think we need to get more information, because for a lot of people, they were really truly taking this all in, and they needed that processing time. Because some of the questions were coming, thinking, like, is this just, the calendars are already fixed among them? And I don't know if everybody was hearing, no. Anything's on the table, we want any and all ideas.
Right, right. And we can create some, some, once we get the survey from staff, then our team can begin to kind of create, okay, there seemed to be some momentum for this idea, there seemed to be some momentum for this idea. And then we can give possible scenarios. Very similar, we gave scenarios last year to you guys regarding stupid case, you know, ending on June 5th or ending on June 10th. You know, which one do we want there, too? And again, if, if there's, if, like, even, there was one staff member that said, Ron, why do we, not Ron, why do we wait till August to learn this? I really like, if we could do this possibly in July. Or June, or things like that. And that's where, obviously, from an administrative, Jennifer's shaking her head, because we, I wouldn't recommend days after, after school. I, I would. But, you know, we used to have a summer academy at the end of July. But, you know, that's pretty disruptive to some people who already have plans, because we kind of set that, too. But that's on the table, you know, where people are interested in meeting that earlier and see what's going on. So, I think we've got some direction, and ultimately, I'll solicit some feedback from the board once we see that. Obviously, an email's real easy to write to the staff about, you know, gathering any more feedback that wasn't sent. And then a survey will be coming once we get all of our feedback collected, with some possible ideas about how to perfect, you know, all the way from, hey, how do you learn best? Did this year's format, where it was, you know, two full days and then one, you know, one day of possibly learning, or, you know, just absorbing and in work time after you comprehend it, or three half-days? We can work through some different models that way, too, as well.
Okay, we're on to future meeting, the Jeddah. We've got the workshop October 10th, 7 o'clock. We've got month ending on 28th at 7 o'clock. And then November 18th.
Is November 18th okay with everybody? Instead of the last Monday, it's November 18th? If that would work for everybody compared to the Monday before Thanksgiving?
We can. Just need to get 20 persons. We've got a couple birthdays on the 17th in California, so my wife may want to be at the party on 17th.
Oh, I'm fine with that.
With his wife being...
The 18th, I prefer the 18th.
The 18th, just fun.
Seeing Hamilton on the 16th, we're good.